I would like to call the meeting to order. This is a workshop meeting for the mayor and council. Notice was provided January fourth, two thousand twenty-four, with the record in New York Star Ledger, both official newspapers of the borough. Notice was posted in the building board at the Borough Hall and the Borough website. And also, copy is preserved in clerk's office. Pleasure, please, and one more sign is brought to you by Council K.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, regenerable, and just as for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Kim. Mayor Kim?
Here.
Counselor Jeff?
Here.
Counselor Kim? Counselor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Min?
Here.
Counselor Betri?
I'll be right back, I left my phone.
Counselor Moniu?
Yes.
For attorney?
I'm here.
For administrator?
Here.
Sorry about that. Alright, in the roll call.
Yes.
Would you go ahead with the adoption of minutes, please? Oh, I'm sorry. No, please, you're right, I'm sorry, you're right. Uh, please review the adoption of minutes. We have a... Is there any concerns about the regular meeting session, regular meeting, special meeting on June twenty-fourth, July fifteen, July twenty-second, and August thirteen? No? Alright, good.
Introduction to audience two thousand twenty-four dash fifteen, creating audience chapter one sixty-nine entitled lead base paint inspection.
Yes. Any question about those orders?
So, this is for the premises that was built after nineteen seventy-eight?
That's the mall of the state of New Jersey, and probably the rest of the, the rest of other states as well. Um, it's because nineteen seventy-eight, because after that, they started to reinforce it. Before, they could have put lead, lead base paint there, and now, they're saying that from now on, if you can do lead base, you cannot do it. And after that, they'll go to inspection. If they get into trouble, you know, that's when they start to regulate it. We just didn't have these orders.
Right, but then, do we have, uh, uh, perhaps some ideas how to help people?
No, 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 we don't do that yet. Anyone else? Alright, let's move forward.
Second reading public hearing, audience two thousand twenty-four dash thirteen, amending chapter forty-eight entitled officer and employee to reform the residency requirement for the municipal administrator.
Alright, Mr. Presley, I ordered this two thousand twenty-four dash thirteen. Any questions about this? We already did, this is our second reading, as you know. The reason why, as you guys know, we did this, because the orders stated that, that only Palaces Park residents could apply to become a BA. It was restrictive, and we're opening it up for the best candidates. Any questions?
No question, but, you know, I just wanna mention saying that, you know, we need to start, uh, advertise, uh, on a certain, uh, source.
Yes.
And we start looking for BA.
I spoke with the BA, BA is really to help sell. BA is gonna, um, post up at Indy and, and, um...
LinkedIn.
LinkedIn, and also post up for the municipality, Eagle municipalities website for them. But I will find another source where they charge a nominal fee, and a lot of vendors go there to take a look. So, I'll find that and I'll report to you guys. I'll report to the BA, and he'll do that as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I go back, uh, first reading of the news? I have a question.
Which one?
Lead base paint.
Yeah, that is.
Sure.
It does say it's for the rental, uh, rental, you know, the, 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 but it doesn't apply to the, you know, new owner who married and tried to get their house.
They don't chip off pay. They ask you, when you buy a home, they ask you these questions. If they lie, they're gonna get a huge penalty and a huge problem. They don't, they do not do self-checks every single day.
So, so, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
That's okay, that's okay.
According to my knowledge, that when you hear the renter, you don't do that, but when you have buyer, the previous owner have to write or say yes, that there is no lead paint is in town. So, they were confirmation by the, the previous owner.
So, it's not required?
So, that's why it's not required, but the renter is new and we don't, they don't know if something happened or not, that's why they have to write it.
Good, thank you.
Okay. We're back to two thousand twenty-four dash thirteen. Everybody's okay with this?
Yes.
Okay. Next, yeah, go ahead.
Audience two thousand twenty-four dash fourteen.
We're still at thirteen right now, go ahead.
No, I'm just asking, so this, you only have thirty minutes to read this, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're just changing it for, to open up the market to residents beyond Palaces Park. Alright. Let's move forward.
Audience two thousand twenty-four dash fourteen, amending chapter forty-eight entitled officers and employees to amend the salary requirement for the municipal administrator.
Any questions about orders two thousand twenty-four dash fourteen?
No.
Source can be read, so... Alright, let's move forward.
Okay, discussion item for consent agenda two thousand, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two thirty-two, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two forty-three.
Alright, so, as you guys all know, who are, who enjoyed, who came for the special meeting. Special meeting was because for the one twenty-fifth. Um, the finance department that certain bills, uh, should, you know, they, they wanted to just pay right now during that opportunity. They, they could have waited, but then, because, uh, you know, they, they feel like some of the bills should be addressed before make their life of independence here, we approved it. That's why you don't see the big stack. It's like half, half gone right now. So, you know, take your time right now. Review, is there any questions? Right now is the time to ask. Amazon corporate account, I have a question for the BA. Who has an Amazon corporate account?
I'm really checking facilities manager.
Facilities manager, would you please do me a favor? Verify which employee in our, in our staff has Amazon credit?
Well, my, I mean, the, my question goes to same, uh, goes to the same. It's Amazon corporate, corporate credit card, right?
Yes.
Why is, why is being used to a library?
Well, let's do this, right? Would you pull off, pull up Amazon, all the Amazon corporate credits? Ask the finance to bring us the, the invoice, request the shipping approval. Thank you. That's on page one. We got page one? I think that's it. Yes.
I also need, um, purchase of the invoice, uh, Charles Communication.
Which one? First page, second page?
First page, uh, toward about Charles Communication, three hundred four, nine, eight, six cents, and hundred forty-three.
Ah, this is the one that, um, they, they, uh... Yes, for the electrical bill, I mean, which, uh, the, uh, for, for lines and stuff. We'll pull this out as well, BA. Please ask the finance, finance department to bring the invoice, the directions, with the payments. Any more questions? Take your time.
Um, on the, what's the, 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 Richfield Health Service?
Uh, page one or two, three.
So, one, two, three, so, about, is it, is it, is it, is it, you know, within the, you know...
Say that again, which one?
It's a Richfield Health Department?
Yeah, Richfield Health Department.
What do we use?
Yeah, this is a shared service.
Yes.
Uh, you wanna explain?
It's a shared, shared service we have with, with Richfield. It's open for the, uh, our health officer.
You know, you know, Bronchop's share, Bronchop's not, yeah, Bronchop's not a full time.
I see, I'll come, thank you.
Rude man, Rod, forty-one thousand. Hold that, I'm sorry. Oh, you, you heard that for the last time, he's like, we gotta get paid, we're not gonna serve you. He said, um, I have another question here. It says gun, gun purchase. I thought the police department had the budget to purchase guns. This will be on, I just saw it, one second. That's gonna be odd. I made, I made that number, so it's...
Second page?
Yeah, Eagle Point Gun Shop. We have about six, a little over six thousand dollars. I thought, BA, that the police department had their own budget. So, my question is to pull this out and make sure, um, why are they asking us to give guns? I've never seen this before.
Well, page two?
Well, we're actually, uh, page, yes.
Page two.
Page two?
Eagle Point Gun Shop, two entries.
Okay, I see. Pull that out too, and my question to the finances, why are people recovering the other budget?
Okay.
Honestly, it's, I don't think this is fun.
Excuse me?
I don't think this is fun, but, but we're gonna pull it out, you know?
I'm gonna pull it, I'm not sure if they're, they're buying or working or not with that. It could be something else.
The bottom line is, my question is, I think they have their budget. Why are you bringing the budget to me, to us?
I don't know, I'll look into it, yes.
Can you let me know that too?
Yeah. Yeah, he's the police commissioner, he told everybody. Okay. Let's go to your orders. I wish. Institution for Forensic, five hundred fifty dollars.
That's for the, I don't know what it is, that's for the, um, the cadet that we, um, send out to the Vernon County, uh...
Oh, so this is the police academy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Matera Nursery Incorporated. Could you pull this out too? This will be the first, second, third, fourth, fourth page, Matera's Nursery. Pull up. And I want to know, um, who, out of which department takes this? It says Streets and Roads.
Streets and Roads.
DPW. So, why is the DPW asking us the same question goes as well?
It says fuel, so I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Yeah, so let's get, take this out, pull up one. Thank you. Public Library, Michael Stores Incorporated, A, um... Michael Stores, same page, fifth, uh, fifth page, A and E, twenty. It comes out as... It says, it says, um, the third solution. Yeah, this A and E, and I think this is for the library, isn't it?
Yeah, P is for library.
Why is library charging us?
No, no, library funds is all part of a current fund.
Is it? Okay. Thank you. So, uh, you're the chair for the library committee, right? Counselor Moniu?
I'm the...
Yeah, so you know their bills?
Yeah.
Good.
We have, the board approves it.
Well, board approves, but I want you to know what they're spending, is that okay? Good.
Mayor, did you pull the, um, Matera, Matera's Nursery?
Yes, I did.
Yes. Okay, that, I, uh, that's the, uh, company who had, uh, who does the, uh, parts also. Uh, their lawnmower care service, so I think those are the instances who, uh, you know, multiple department actually uses them.
Oh.
For their parts, uh, you know, anything that related to the, the, the lawn, I guess.
Matera's supposed to deal with the, the, right.
Maybe we'll use that too.
Right. My question is, is very simple, is this that, okay, they're all in the light budget, I get it. But if there's a budget for each department, there's a reason for that. So, my question is, if you guys have a budget for each department, why are you bringing that back to us? That's my question.
Uh, I, yeah, I asked the same question, because recreation always keeps a bill from, from the payment from the, our main office. So, it's, everything is coming in as a revenue, and then, uh, it always execute out from the accounting office directly.
So, then, we, we have to identify what they're allowed to invoice us and what they're not. Right? Because recreation has a budget, they all have a budget.
Throughout the whole different departments, yeah, so...
So, BA, you are the CFO as well. Try to find out what our, what our budgets are, and what are, what are, what we have to pay in certain circumstances, and what other, they, you know, how, how do they know what we should pay and what we should not, because the government body doesn't know? Even though we're all under the, we, they're all, they're our division, but they have their budget. There's cases where they're like, okay, you know, you're gonna pay for this, it's not part of our budget.
The, they don't...
They can't purchase anything if it's not in their budget. It has to be in their budget. They have to have money for it. And the department heads generally know what line items they're supposed to be charged against. And the finance department double checks to make sure that there is money available, and the CFO signs off on it, and they make sure that it's going to the right account.
I see.
Also, the, uh, they don't, even though recreation has their own budget, they may not have their own account, bank account. And that's probably included in the current part.
Right.
Oh, yeah, nothing but the bank account part. I wanna identify what the budget is used for in each department. That's how you know they're allowed to give us additional invoices.
So, uh, so basically, you know, if you see the first page of the, the bill claim list, right?
Claim list.
You know, you see all this, you know, funded line item, like, uh, fundo one, fundo two.
Right, right, right.
Fund fourteen, fund twenty-eight. We need to identify which ones are appro, uh, which ones been actually, uh...
Used for different departments.
Used for the, uh, actual budget line item. Anything that's, uh, coming out from, uh, you know, not budgeted items, then it should be, uh, should be in the, uh, those one.
The current fund is the largest budget. That's, that's where all operating expenses and salary and wages come from.
O D starts from here, okay.
That's the current fund, O D. And then, salary and wages come out of fund number one. The capital fund is anything for long-term projects that have to be bonded, sometimes like streets and roads, or, or buying products that are very expensive. The pool is its own utility. They have their own separate budget for the pool, and that's considered a separate utility. Recycling trust is again, another trust for anything that's used for recycling. The unemployment trust, affordable, seniors, and going down along. Those things are separate trusts, they're not used by themselves.
Understood.
So, that's right.
Okay.
So, main, main two, that you're interested in, uh, the current fund, which includes all borough departments.
The big one.
As, and the capital fund, which can be used for any department, depending on whether bond ordinances were placed or not. And the pool has their own operating budget. Really, they're considered a utility, and they are separate from the current fund, and separate from all of the departments.
Okay.
Right, so I was going to ask if we can also see the revenue account? Like, that will be also very helpful each...
Well, I think, or don't they report that if we see the bond list?
Uh, we don't see it on here, so, yeah.
CFO knows.
Right, so I asked for, like, what is, uh, for example, how much pool is making each month?
Did you ask the pool director?
Today, I asked the director.
Good, so you're gonna get, good. Okay, you know, get a little bit of work here, yes?
Regular meeting.
Yeah, basically, we know how much we spend, but we don't know how much we're spending.
Right, that's why I wanted to see it, if...
So, hold. Here comes Stephen. That's a little off, right? Jane. Okay. Anything else, guys? No, I'm gonna continue now. Alright, please continue. Sorry, this is, this is, uh...
How's it?
This consent.
This is, because, I will call them, we need to add, so, for any, during any issue or...
Yeah, that's what I said. Oh, I got you, I'm sorry. Right, 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 thank you for reminding me. Okay, so, guys, um, this is, because this is a consent agenda, my question to you, uh, all of our council members is that from resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two thirty-two, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two four three, any questions?
Two thirty-one is included?
So, consent, consent agenda is usually when you guys, you love summit. If you guys ask a question all at once.
It should be two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one?
Yeah. It's a two forty.
Yeah, I, I would like to know, um, the slipper. It costs about more than two hundred twenty-eight.
Yeah.
I need to know what's our warranty, um, you know, warranty, and also what's the support? That usually costs also extra.
I go, tell them what?
Yeah.
I'm calling the...
Yeah. Let's, let's move this one.
We need to get the council.
To see this.
Which one, which one is this?
Can you call two thirty-one?
Yeah, there is a, this is just a purchase, and we need the, we need a warranty. What services provided, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Moniu, we need the additional information. This is just a contract that we signed. Right.
And then, I just wanna, uh, let all the council members know, uh, that this slipper will be fine all from the bond ordinance that we passed last year.
Yes.
Remember that eight million dollars that we passed? Seven million is for the payments and, uh, reservation that we passed, and the remaining balance is the, uh, you know, part of the, uh, police budget and the DPW budget, and they're gonna buy all from that budget, so...
Thank you. So, we need the warranty. What kind of services provided?
I'll, I'll reach out the camera and...
I have a question for two, three, four. Yeah, um... I've been told by the fire department, fire chief, that, you guys should know that if... I was worried about the fact that if the fire department does a background check, as we do. But, um, what I've been told by the, um, one of the fire chief is that if it's under eighteen, they consult with their parents somehow to do a background check, like, you know? It's a minor, so you have to talk with the parent. But if it's over eighteen years old, what the fire department does is request the background check to the police station. Now, BA, you spoke with, uh, our borough attorney Alan Roth. That wasn't proper, that was the reason why we have to get our own separate verification service, correct? Credit check. I mean, not credit check, not applying for a credit card, but background check.
Insta, insta verify.
Yes, remember we do that? So, so when they, when the fire goes to the police and police does it, I believe it's the same issue. You know, the police have to do their own, you know, background check, because they're, they can't be a service, free service.
For the rest of the...
Yeah, it's not about free, it's about conflict of interest. Right? There's a conflict of interest when a police department, our own guys, does it. We need an independent verification program that you report, that you, uh, you wanted to propose, and we pass that.
Yes.
Yeah, so they should know that from now on, if it's eighteen and over, um, you know, like, they need to do a verification, you have to come to us. Secondly, I request that the chief, because someone has to send us an email, either to you or to their attorney, saying that, hey, it's simple. Hey, we did our background check. That's it, no hurdles, thank you. So, I would like that email, it's not PA, as long as you have it, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I also wanna talk about the handicap parking space, resolution two, three, five. Okay, so this is a typical, um, request for a handicap, because she's, she's physically unable to park a car anywhere close, uh, but close to her residence. I read this over, there's a police department saying that it's okay, I went there, you know, there's plenty of parking spaces. Rosemary Element is a resident of three eighteen Tenth Street, right, second floor. Now, if you, if you read, it says that that her brother, is, this is his brother's house. My brother Fred Sidon Jr. owns this home. Now, if she's legally living there, or, or as a roommate, right? Why isn't she using the driveway in the front? That's my question. So, so if they're trying to save the driveway, you know, for themselves, and use a public issue, I need to know why they use the, uh, street parking right next to them. When they could have parked their parking space here, it seems like you put two cars in there. So, I wanna know what the residential situation is, and I wanna know why she's saying that I cannot park here in the driveway, or in the garage, when she is resident there. You okay?
Yep.
Good, so I want to have that answer. And I have another question for resolution two, three, nine. Of course, I wanna know who are logic tax services? Who are these guys? It seems like they're, they're, they're providing service to provide un, 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 uh... Justifiable issues that we have to address through audits on tax refunds and tax payments?
No, they're a very large corporation that handles tax payments for people and corporations throughout the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, thank you. And two, three, nine, let it be resolved that Anthony Juan Kim, two, two, one, twelve street in Palaces Park, has been granted hundred percent disability status in the Department of Veteran Affairs. Hundred percent disability status, hundred percent, right? So, it's not partial. What I understand is Officer Anthony Kim is, was, is, or was a active police officer in Fort Lee for many, many years. I don't know if he retired yet. I think he still works there. My question is, I know, uh, I know the Department of Veterans says, hey, he's a, he's a handicap.
Yes.
And then, and then if you look at the back... So, my question is, if he is a full-employed police officer in Fort Lee, how does he get hundred percent disability benefits? My question is, does Fort, uh, uh, the, the, uh, the, the police, Fort Lee police hire police officers who have disabilities?
I am wondering how they, they are.
Um, this is a more of a legal matter?
Wasn't available.
Right, I was hoping, uh, counsel, would you find that for me? Uh, thank you. Anything else, maybe you can turn?
Yeah, I wanna discuss resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two, three, three.
Two, three, three.
So, this is... So this is regarding appointing a representative from our town for the Bergen County Community Development Committee.
Sophia, would you explain that?
That will be appointing the two representative from each municipality, we all come here every year to give them.
This is a standard thing, they need representatives in our staff, um, this is a pro bono service, it's free actually. But if we're going to get this benefit, we need two representatives, we report to them, get information and bring it back to us. Luckily, Joe Ferguson and John Rala still wants to participate pro bono, I say thank you very much.
How, and do we get update, um, our representatives after the meeting?
Right, so what happens is they'll go dispose it to us, and they have to sign certain documents once a year, every single time, before they do that, they come to us, hey, I'm gonna get this signed, here it is, check it out, everything's okay, and they sign it off, through the board.
Do we get, so how often do we get them?
Once a year, we do this every single week, pretty much, we get this, uh, service.
And one other question?
Yes.
Is resolution twenty twenty four dash two three six?
Two three six.
So do you want to hire a temporary assistant to the tax?
Yes, um, I don't know if you guys are aware, I will not speak details, uh, due to the HIPAA law, but one of our employees, full-time employee, is in the tax collector's office, is not feeling well, went to the surgery multiple times, recovering right now. But it seems like it would be lucky if he could recover within three months.
Okay.
Um, the BA spoke with the, uh, uh, the tax, tax, Mike Epcella, and, uh, BA, uh, offered Mike Epcella, the tax collector, and our treasurer to find out if, if you could find a suitable temporary filling.
That's what we are looking for.
Yes, and I, I interviewed that person as well.
So they got their stamp on it, so you can blame them later.
Oh, I know this is, mayor, I know this is temporary, uh, tax collector, right? But can we, uh, put a note saying that, you know, certain hour that is maxed?
Yes, this is something that we have talked about, yes, we talked about it, we forgot, thank you for the reminder. Uh, Scott, what, he said it was, um, thirty hours?
Thirty, thirty to thirty-five.
What was the max before you didn't go, you can't be a part-time anymore, he said it was thirty?
It's thirty to thirty-five depending on what the ordinance in the municipality says, so go with thirty, we'd say.
So, uh, before, you know, we go into the regular meeting next week?
Yes.
We wanna, uh, know what the actualness that we have says.
Yes.
Is part-time, so, and then we could, you know, put that in the, uh, uh, update the resolution.
Okay, um, we might, we might have to, I think we could expedite this process, Mike Epcella's over here. I would like to know, BA, through, through Mike Epcella, how many hours are you expecting to, uh, use this new, uh?
Thank you, ma'am, yeah, um, the, my understanding is the threshold for, uh, medical and for pension is no more than thirty-two hours. She's, she's happy to work thirty hours, so it's, it's agreeable between her and the BA.
So let's make sure through the legal council that we do not bring any laws that may lead to full employment, three?
Yes.
And?
And we need to put this in.
Thank you, councilman.
She has to work for herself.
Yeah.
Thank you. She, she was.
It's a workshop, maybe.
Yeah, so make sure that, uh, that this is inside here, how many hours, do we come apart?
Okay.
And also, uh, mayor, can I add one resolution on the bottom for, uh, dash two forty-four, do it next week?
Ooh, you're telling me this, council, uh, council, what is this?
So this is regards to the, uh, the police matter, right? Now, we have to actually write up a resolution to appoint, uh, officer in charge.
I agree.
I'll talk to the details with the, I mean, she left, but the police committee actually talked about it and we came to the agreement. So I'll share what the council, uh, who could, you know, prepare them for next week.
Sure, this is the, 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 um, wait a minute, wait a minute. Is there a proper procedure to advertise as well and go through an interview process, do you guys, did you guys go through that yet?
This is a point.
Well, no, 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 usually.
Not for this.
A wonderful, white. Just do the resolution.
Alright, alright, then, then go ahead, council, thank you for the reminder, I forgot about that, please, all eyes see. Right, and you will discuss with the, uh, police director, and you'll discuss with your, 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 your sub, uh, committee member.
Yes, we will.
Your chair, your voice matters the most.
And that's it for me, yes.
Anybody else? Alright, if you don't mind, I'll go to the council's reports then, let's start with council on you, please.
Uh, we had a library board meeting last week, and there we passed a capital plan, uh, to improve a library building. Library building belongs to Borough, however, the library, uh, agreed already several months back to use the fund of their own fund, uh, uh, so that Borough can improve the library building. Like, in order to use that fund, this fund is the excess fund, which is for many years, they didn't use the money and they accumulate those. Uh, so that, in order to use them, uh, uh, fund, the state level requires, uh, to have, have the capital in that. So that's why we had our work, uh, with the Accari, uh, AccuTo, in the AccuTo group to, you know, uh, provide that, uh, capital fund, and that's several months back, and we, the board reviewed it and then last week we, uh, we passed. So now officially, they can actually start the process to improve the building, uh, the library building, and improvement, improvement of the building requires kind of coordination with the Borough. So, uh, going forward, the, the library and Borough folks, right, is, uh, you know, is going to communicate to start the bidding process.
Thank you, thank you for that. As you guys all know, the library is a property of the Borough, we are considered as a landlord, they're as a tenant. If there's a problem, we rectify it, it's, you know, we should get reimbursed by them, but it's, they have no idea of, of any, they don't have any resources to, to man a project, to renovate the necessary needs for the library, uh, library building. Thank you for that, anything else?
Uh, I just want to, you know, thank you for all the Borough folks, especially Recreational folks, to put that, and also mayor and, uh,
John, 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 you worked, you all worked, you're still doing the yearbook.
Yeah, I am still doing the yearbook. But anyway, the last Saturday event was a really interesting, I was, it was a good honor, so I really, it actually shows, so that Pal, Pal, Palisades Park community is united, so being united, so that's actually a good event. And we, uh, we have a committee on the Kids to Report group, publishing, for publishing for the one hundred twenty-fifth anniversary, so that's target the end of, uh, December, so we're collecting a lot of, uh, stories from different departments, our organization, and, uh, also we did advertise to, uh, public that whoever wants to write, uh, the article about what it's like living in Palisades Park, right? And, and so we welcome to accept, so please help us, thank you.
The governing body, thanks you very much, that's a big work, that's a, that's a big project. We're glad that we got pretty good sponsorships, and I think I'm very secure in CFO to print out that yearbook, so we went, it's a win-win situation. Thank you again for that hard work, it's gonna be long, but I, I think you're the person that can get it done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, council, council Kim?
Yeah, new COVID is rolling around, so as the body understand, be very, very careful, it's very contagious and so try to have where the mask again and try not to go to places that is, uh, open, I mean, many companies, people are there and close, uh, close to it.
Okay, good, yeah, so what, what do you think was okay, where else?
Yeah. That was.
But you're right, council Kim, I, I do recall that people who got the COVID, even with the COVID shot, they're suffering, you're right, it's, it's a different strain. And, you know, we, we all recommend, um, like Jason Kim said, Council Kim said, that we should all get our booster shots, new strains are coming out. Recommend that, you know, you're right, everybody should get their shots, anything else?
Thank you, that's you for that.
Thank you, councilman?
Uh, I mean, same thing goes to myself too, you know, uh, I wanna thank everyone who actually participated in one twenty-fifth anniversary. And I, I was glad to see everyone come together as a one community, that's, that's the most important thing, and I was happy to see that. Uh, also, the, uh, police department, uh, we're actually, uh, going through a lot of changes. And myself as a chair and Stephanie, uh, council Stephanie Chang as a, uh, committee member, we're doing a thorough reviews, uh, make sure we do the right, uh, decision-making, the right direction, so bear with us, Kim, thank you.
Thank you very much, again, councilman, thank you for helping me out on a crunch moment, I was too busy doing something else. Would you help me out on that day, setting everything up, it was chaotic, but I'm glad the council president was there, help, supporting that, so I could get my work done, I appreciate that, thank you. Council?
Um, so an update from the school board. So a director from the high school reached out to, uh, set up a field trip to the town hall, just so that the students understand how the local governments work. And another idea that mayor and I have brought to the school is perhaps it may be a good idea for the students to have like a model mayor and council meeting a, at, at the school, just so that, you know, they get the opportunity to really understand how local government works. And for them to really, you know, participate and, um, kinda speak up about how, what their views are and get, get that opportunity to gain, you know, leadership skills and things like that.
Absolutely.
So that's in the works, so we'll, we'll keep you updated if there's, uh, progress with that.
Council, you brought that, I, my, my vote went up, I was like, wait a minute, other good towns are doing it. It's, it, they, uh, you told me that the, the students wanna come here one day as a field trip, to see the, the roles and responsibilities of the employees, and you brought that up, saying that why don't we just do a model mayor and council, other towns are doing it, it's absolutely, not, it's absolutely legal. We provide them with, with, uh, overall goal information, and we, we see how they act, I think it's a good cross-reference, I think it's a great idea, thank you, thank you. Um, I have a little more, I have two subjects that I wanna talk about. I, I hope all of you guys know what I'm trying to do, it's called ADU auxiliary dwelling units. This is, I, I think if you guys didn't get it, let me know now, I'll send it again, but what it is simply, and I'll say that it's again, again in the regular session, is that out of states, we, we see that hat with our required by law to provide affordable units. Depending on the population and the, and the amount of growth, uh, uh, development potential in, in the town. Um, there are builder remedy, uh, uh, lawsuits that's happening right now, we're fighting fierce, fierce, fiercely in court, trying to get our bargain back. This whole, this whole story comes back the year two thousand, this is when the Mount Laurel Act came out, and, and before that, and then, uh, the, the New Jersey state invited all the towns and said, hey, show me how many affordable you guys have, we'll work together with you, we'll have enough time, let's work it out together. We'll help you if you disclose and let us know. There were a lot of towns that didn't take that offer, and there's many reasons for that, but all those reasons are unacceptable because it is the law. Now, we are against builder remedy issues right now, there is a lot of, so many units right now, they wanna come in, and if we come, if they come in as a builder remedy, they have the right, allegedly so far, to build whatever units, seven floor, ten floor, twenty floor on re, on residential areas that shouldn't be there. So if the builder goes, I have a builder remedy in about three homes, next to the homes, they have the right to, they think they have the right to build our province there. We're in court right now trying to stop it, now, this is a specific New Jersey problem. And Phil Murphy, Governor Phil Murphy, two years ago, or few years ago like that, decided to allow ADU. ADU stands for auxiliary dwelling units. He wanted to remedy the lack of affordable homes, units in each town by allowing the landlord, who lives the, who's in the location, who's a resident in his lot, to legally, legally allow units to be rented for affordable housing. What am I talking about? The basements. The basements is a big problem in our town, but not only that, right now, we have to remedy, let's just say if there's a hundred units, right, that we're lacking. Just, I'm giving you example, round number, a hundred units, right? If the builder remedy comes in, he goes, oh, you, oh, you have to make hundred units, they are only allowed, they're only could provide fifteen to twenty percent of their buildup. Fifteen percent they're gonna keep the affordable housing for thirty years, or twenty percent they're gonna give us money so we could build affordable housing somewhere else. If, so that means that they could build hundred units and give us fifteen units. For me, that is not a good ROI return on investment. And right now, we have, we have plenty of, uh, uh, duplexes that, 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 we don't have to build another unit. There is already a viable unit, and I did talk to, uh, the specialist, special attorney, Northgrave, and I, I got confirmation from the, the, the borough en, uh, borough engineer, borough platter, the, the experts of special attorneys that's fighting off the builder remedy cases right now, and they're excited to sit down with us soon to have a closest executive meeting, so you guys could ask all the questions you want. I believe this is a win-win situation, let me tell you why, because we don't have to build more if you could allow, uh, you know, those basements to have affordable homes. That means they, they don't have to, they can build four hundred units, three hundred units. And secondly, as you guys all know, there are people who are, who are, who are very bad people, who actually victimized the illegal tenants in the basement. They act all nice, as soon as they go inside there, they go, you know what, they're gonna have to pay me a lot of money because this, this is illegal. The law usually on court says, if you get busted, the landlord for doing that, you have to pay six months of back pay of rents, no matter what, if they paid or not, and also the moving expenses. They are having a fun time with this fraudulent activity, the illegal tenants, and these guys are ready to three and four, that's a pre-dam income. Now, they, and, and if we allow that to happen, which is physically possible, because it's an ADU, all you, uh, the specs of, for example, duplex illegal basement qualifies. It's a simple fix, you don't have to change anything for the duplexes, there's a lot of duplexes, I found that at least fifty percent of duplex owners own that property. And let me tell you the residual, uh, benefits of the community. Is that not only we're gonna reduce the required, uh, affordable homes, affordable units, they're legal, they're legal to rent the basement, which means they could get that income and report this IRS legally, and also their value increased as well because of the income. And also, guess what, we get the tax as well, we use that tax for areas that we need for surplus of, uh, students, uh, parking lots. We need to regulate this, we need to, you know, we couldn't do this because we feel bad that, you know, they're making illegal, you know, uh, you know, you know, income there, and we only act if someone made a report, and I had a very big problem with it. So I think this is a win-win situation, we could reduce the big buildups of big apartments, we could also allow this to be legal by law and also regulate the place. This has a residual effect as well, so I gave you guys the information about that, any questions? I'm gonna refer you to Northgrave, in the meantime, we have the meeting, Northgrave is at your disposal. Uh, council Northgrave, and you give him, he asked me any questions, but still, we're gonna have an official, uh, uh, executive meeting, and I would request, after you guys are content with your Q and As, have a special meeting to, uh, make this into an ordinance. It's, once we make an ordinance, second, two meetings, two months, it doesn't necessarily mean that every duplex have to do it, it's a, it's an option, they don't have to do it. But I believe that they're gonna be very welcoming, that you know what, I was so scared, I couldn't rent it now, we could, they could rent it legally and we could regulate it, they could get their value up and create our taxes. Read it over, guys, you have, you have, you have time to review it now, all the way to next week, and after that, I'll give you the contact of, of council Northgrave, Cockburn, Cocker, all the specialists, and you could ask that question, we'll have one more executive meeting to, before we start that, okay?
Can I mention one more?
Sure.
Of that, um, is that, once we get to regulate these people who have been living in Palisades Park and the illegal, you know, basements, then we would also be able to get a better understanding of, you know, people registered in our schools, so that's another benefit that could come out of it because that's, that's a problem that has existed in our town for so long, but we just couldn't regulate it, because we just had no way of tracking these people down. But, you know, it could also address the excessive number of people that are, that apparently have the same, you know, home address, but we just couldn't regulate them.
Yes, so, basically, you know, this ADU Act ultimately controls the maximum occupancy of the each unit that's been, uh, either, uh, basement, you know, full floor, the whole thing. Yeah, we, we, now, it, once that comes effect, we can start enforcing those kinda things.
I totally agree, I'm here to present this, I'm not, yeah, I did, I did tell you the residual aspect of it, but our main reason why we're doing this, and I want everybody to know, it's not because of that, that's a residual, that's gonna happen naturally. What we're here is because we need to fight off the builder remedy cases that we're facing. They want hundreds and hundreds of odd units, and in order for them to provide us fifteen to twenty percent, we're talking about over a thousand. Where? They're gonna put it wherever they want. We are in the process of trying to redo the master plan, assign redevelopment zones, so if there is a need for redevelopment, they can do it there, not in front of co- areas that are, that shouldn't be in the residential small streets, where there's gonna be a problem with, with traffic, help, uh, health concerns, fire concerns, emergency concerns. So this is what our main reason is, the residual is beautiful, but I'd rather focus on the reason why we're doing this, because we wanna provide affordable housing.
On top of that, I, the, the easier way to understand is, I would rather resolve this affordable housing problem ourselves, not rely, relying on those, uh, people who wants to come in here with the thousands of units. That's my main goal is, we wanna resolve this matter within us, not from outside.
I agree, I agree, so let's just do a simple calculation, let's say they're gonna rent the affordable housing for thirty years at fifty percent. How much do we need right now? We're talking over two thousand units, we gotta stop this somehow, but we have the resource. We have tons of illegal, uh, duplex homeowners who live there and rented illegally, let's utilize that. Let's enforce it, let's regulate it. There's one more thing I wanna talk, um, this is a very concerning, where are the Brower sisters? I'm gonna ask, he, they're supposed to come here, but they're not here, so I'm gonna ask, uh, you know, maybe, maybe Mr. Lorenzo will see if everything's okay with her, but he is, um, they're not here, so. Maybe, um, Sophia, would you do me a favor, could you ask if the sisters are okay or not?
Okay.
Thank you, cuz they're usually here, and they're, they're, they're always representing the people on the other side. All right, now, now have a motion to close our session and open to the public.
I'll make a motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
You guys have three minutes, please come up, but you have to only talk about what we talked about. Anybody else? Please come up, name and address, welcome, you guys, you guys just left us.
I've been sitting here for a while.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, do that, maybe a border for Coa and Geno. Um, I really like a lot of the topic that you mentioned, it seemed like a very exciting. Um, especially the one that you sleep mentioned about the school, uh, coming in, um, some of the student and be part of the government body, and know more about how this move.
Father, Father Mayor and Council.
Yeah, I think that's a nice program for the kid, um, I hope it's, it's, you know, it's get together. And keep getting interested in the current more, that's what I say. Another thing that I see, I would like to get more info about, uh, what you just mentioned about that pro- project that you mentioned.
It's called ADU, what you have to do is just scroll online, Google ADU, New Jersey ADU, single.
Everything is under, yeah, you don't think it'll be very beneficial if we make like one, uh, special meeting for our town to get more about, it's not everybody's gonna know about. Like, I come to the meeting and I go, now I can go online and check. For our community to know more about the beneficiary, and get a little more info about, um, like one of the special meeting, people that are interested, wanna learn more about.
Yes.
And have question, and that way, you know, if we come out with that, that will be very informed for the community.
You know, I'll be honest with you, uh, the, the community residents who buy, have the duplex for one point two million dollars, I was hoping that, you know, as they buy the homes, they find a, find a little responsibility, a little, little pride. But as you know, what happened, and I told the rest of people who doesn't know, the reason why we're, one of the main reasons why we don't have street parking, all right? It's not because of the duplexes, cuz if we really think about it, fifty by a hundred, each unit could put in four units, I mean, four-
Cars.
Cars, two in the driveway, and two in the parking lot. Now, there are people that wanna pay, they, they wanna rent the illegal bas- basement, make that money, and then pay for the tax, it's kinda fun, I get it. But, but the problem is, it gets really bad. They, they, they even use a garage, a double car garage, as a storage facility, or a business. And then what they do is, they rent the illegal basement tendencies, the driveway for three hundred bucks, and they park their car on the street. This is why I circle back, that as a governing body, I don't blame that for it. I think it's a good start to start ourselves, we have to bring pride, we have to show that we're improving, that things are being cleaned, and, and everything's being maintained, so when they walk on the street, when they see a trash can, they're gonna pick it up and throw it in the trash can. We're far from that, but let's just show our pride first, so you could, you could be contagious and tell every, you know, show that, hey, we're trying, and you should try to. The, 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 the factor of con, you know, like this pride for residents who are multi-million dollar owners, it's not there. It's, it's not there, but we're gonna be, we're gonna get there.
And another thing, I think this is a good idea, because we've been, like Ms. Lee say, we've been dealing with the regulation about, you know, the basement being great, and we can try to leave here, I believe, as a school, um, having that problem, I think that would be very beneficial for our town to regulate that, so hopefully, if we can do it. And another thing, I really, I was here on Sunday for the one hundred, twenty fifth anniversary. I really think it's come out really good, thank you, thank you for the hard work. We missed some, uh, of the government body, like, sort of the council member, like Mr. Jason and uh, Beatrice, uh, who was there, it was very nice, it's funny to see all of them, but I know people have been to do, but, um, whoever was there was very nice. And another thing, I know you said to mention about the topic, but now that we heard a lot of gun shooting in school and all that, so I know the police office is very active around our school, I would like to ask, meaning, you know, to make sure that they go around the school, check who is around, and just, and do it's good time to be, you know, be alert in that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that, anybody else? Please come up, we have three minutes, please come up. Name and address. How are you, Sue?
So, town, two thirty seven, Central Boulevard. So, um, while the, the Library Committee Chair was speaking, that you mentioned that library is the property of the borough.
Yes.
I just make sure that I just see the documentation that it belongs to Borough, including land and, uh, building.
What you could do is you could Oprah question.
Okay. Yeah, cuz that question just came up when I was, um, looking for our school properties as well. Then I came up questioning the library, but I couldn't find any, so I'd have to see that.
That's how you brought it, we also own properties behind the high school, which is one of the reasons why we're utilizing for something that could supplement the, uh, the affordable homes elements. And also we own the property of the, correct me if I'm wrong, the border event, uh, building, you know, where, where Joseph, Joseph Rello and all those guys' office, that's also ours as well. And also the back end of the Lindbergh School, that field, that's the property of ours.
Property of yours, cuz it's the library that play around the, uh, that is.
But then I, all, you know, like, what, what I know is that it's a property, but the border event takes care of it.
Okay, but how do we determine that critical to Borough, that should we request, what, do I request a B or something?
No, again, ask the Oprah request.
Oprah.
And just give you some more hints, instead of just doing one Oprah request, do some multiple Oprah request.
Okay.
And confirm it with me too. I just asked you to do a Plaza for me, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Joe, maybe you could align us, come up, three minutes.
I'd like you to remind me, actually, I'm the guy that cuts that grass on our field, in my pool, uh, my my field. I'm also a longtime resident of Palisades Park, uh, my guy Joseph belongs, eighty five percent of the Boulevard Palisades Park. Um, the library, library used to be Central Boulevard's school. It wasn't Palisades Park property. I don't, you know, I've been living in this town sixty eight years, my grandparents moved in here in the eighteen hundreds, uh, before Palisades Park was even Palisades Park. Uh, property is always in a school property.
So the library, you're saying that is-
Was Library Lindbergh School, that was Central Boulevard's school.
Was.
Was.
Was. Did you know that the, uh, our senior apartments in three hundred Hounding Avenue, used to be ours too? Do you know that?
No idea about that.
Yeah. They, they gave it off to the county.
Well, well.
We gave a lot, nice lot over there in the apartment, during the past administration, and gave it to the county, said you take care of it.
Well, I was here when they rebuilt nineteen seventy four, they put up the, uh, board offices on that property. That property I didn't know, as a matter of fact, uh, Cortraccianno was, uh, I forgot, he was the principal of high school at the time, uh, Mr. Katz, I believe was our superintendent in the schools, gave that thing. And I've never seen anything ever giving that property away, so I'll, I'll bear witness, you are not positive, but I would like to see it opened up and checked out. Also, the field, the field was taken over by the town, you say, the-
Not taken over by the town, what I know, and I, I think you're correct, and this is why I'm, I'm, I'm gonna verify right off. By next week, I'm gonna find the answers. Now, all three of those locations that we talked about, um, but the thing is, what I've been told is that that is a property of the Palisades Park Borough, and we're allowing the school to use it.
That property was always Lindbergh Field, not School Field. Well, I gotta go back to nineteen twenties, and I wasn't there.
So that was-
My, my, I understand, wish you would handle it. Now, the problem is though with that, like I said, the property was also given to the county to use as, it was a park, set up with the county. Uh, approximately, um, you have thirty six years in the school system. Approximately twenty five or thirty years ago, that reverted back to the school, the properties from this, uh, from the county, the funding scheme, cuz they, they set that up as a field through funds to redo that, and they did it, cuz it was really a terrible field project. And Lindbergh Field was more of a minefield than it was the, the baseball field, back when I was playing, I was a child. And, uh, I just don't ever remember, I was a little kid though, you know, so it's, it's a long time ago. And I don't remember that being given to the town, the town doesn't do anything, you, you would cut the damn grass. I begged for help with a lot of things there, but, oh, that's your property, don't worry about it, so I take care of it. I'm the guy sitting on that tractor for the last thirty six years cutting that grass, wasn't the town, even when it was a county park. Through the state, you know, the funding, I cut the grass, with the rest of the custodians and maintenance men, and that's the school system. Now you're in the town's choice. Now the public's way of park, we are doing, you don't take care of things for a hundred years, and then you come back, my three minutes are up, sir.
Joe, you're talking about your knowledge.
My three minutes are up, sir.
Okay, sir, you're talking about your knowledge, right? I know about my knowledge too, let's get to the bottom of this, shall we? All right, good, something?
Check with my board office, let that do it, let lawyers work it out, I'll bring it up.
No lawyer is required, we have, we have land, land use records in the municipality.
So who owns it?
So we're gonna ask, what we do is, first of all, you're tax office.
Now you're gonna ask, that, that's the whole question to me, you know, I don't, listen.
What?
I believe in shared services. This is kind of the same to work, like I said, we're more family.
We're not talking about that, Joe, we've talked about the library, because library needs to renovate. Now, past practices that you're talking about, the Borough take care of the, the renovations. All right, anybody else? Please come up, name and address, oh, by the way, I'm sorry.
Sure.
No, Jason, if you want to add concerning, there, I'm sorry, just give me one minute, what was the thing that you wanted to talk about, we were in the conversation, I, I said wait for it. Would you like to give about the property, who owns the properties?
Yeah, uh, no.
Please, go ahead, enlighten us.
Um, me being a board member, me being a, uh, council member for many years, that question reached out in time. And then, I finally realized that, I found out that the, uh, town has a lease with the school.
Lease, which one, which property with that number, that one you've never seen?
Still school.
Lease, okay.
And we also have a lease to the library as well.
We have the lease, or they have the lease?
Lease means both sides have.
The library has the lease with the school board.
I get it.
The property is the town.
Who's he, who's, okay, good, the property owner is the town.
That's all, is the school and the library.
Do you have a, do you have proof of that? You have lease, do you see it?
We have, I saw the proof, the lease, actual proof, because the, uh, Diane Montemillo actually deep into that. And then she gave the lease, and I will forward to our BA for that. So I saw the lease, but the lease, like, changes every like twen- forty years, or something like that. So, I know that you never saw the town had that, the central school, but in the time, town should own it. We always rent out and change the lease like every forty years or fifty years like that. That's why normal people don't know, they never see the lease, it's always internally between the governing member of that time period with a superintendent of that time period. The last one that I saw was the, uh, the, one of the councilmen, a mayor, one of the mayor over there, I forgot a little bit. Actually signed a paper with the, uh, one of the superintendent of, uh, a lin- Lindbergh School. Because there, there was a historical background that comes with it, I don't wanna, uh, take it too long on everything, but yes, absolutely they belongs to the town, so we have the lease.
He saw from Diane Montemiro.
I might have a copy of it as well.
Would you please, if somebody could ask for a copy?
Yep.
Thank you so much, he sent it to the-
I wanted to ask to forward to you.
To, to, uh, Scott, he's a legal guy.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I agree, I agree.
You don't have that, please from the library.
About the library too.
Library property, library doesn't have actually lease, but there's a property belongs to the town, I know that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll still have to verify, it's gotta be in some form of record with some tax office, with the clerk's office, or even the lib- in the library boards, let's find that out.
I think that you're gonna find that, that's why I stopped it.
No, 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 we need something to work with, if you have it for the Lindbergh School lease, he'll love it. But he'll need it, thank you.
Hey, I'll research some of the old deeds, I have some deeds that's back to nineteen hundreds.
Thank you, thank you. We have until next week, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that, go ahead, your name and address.
Uh, my name is Jong Chang Kim, the address is the five one nine Second Street, uh, on the eight, twenty five.
Your name is Mr. Kim?
Nam, uh, Jong Chang Kim, yeah, actually, uh, the Nam Kim is my wife. My wife, uh, sent the email to, uh, the mayor of Kim. Uh, maybe September two, uh, she got the email about the flooding problem.
Is this so long without the drain?
Yeah.
Okay, I spoke with your wife, and I actually got really, like, kinda, kinda annoyed, I'm not gonna lie to you. She doesn't believe me that I'm working on it. Do you, do you know what the problem is, right? I solved it, what is?
The problem is, uh, the, 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 doing, doing, uh-
There is no drain there.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yes.
Now, I need to get an engineer, and I'm gonna send that to your lovely wife numerous of times, I'm gonna tell you this as well. We need to get an engineer who need to work that, to see if we could create a drain there, it's not easy job. But we're gonna get it done, okay? But hold on a second, hold on a second, I'm not done yet. So, if you didn't notice that we just hired a special engineer, one of his projects is for, is to review that. Please patiently wait, uh, wait, I know that your wife and you contacted a lot of council members, we try to help you out. I can tell you as a mayor, I'm working on it, and I'll get back to you, go ahead, come, Councilman.
Yeah, I think you refers to the house on the fourth street, this is the house of Second Street, that's it, so to the point. Yeah, I think you refers to the house on Fourth Street. This is the house of Second Street, that's a two different thing.
You said, I mean, didn't your wife come here to complain several times?
Yeah, I, my wife, uh, unfortunately, they, they accept it.
Did she come here every single time and complain?
No.
Uh, no, no, no.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's a first time, it's a first time.
Okay, this is something else.
Yeah, but we have, we.
Can you, can you, can you speak real loud?
No, it's okay, right now she can't come together. Right now, we're talking to you. It's okay, she'll get an opportunity. My thing is, my apologies, I thought that was, your wife was talking about Fourth Street. But now you're saying that the Second Street.
Fourth Street.
It's the first time you're approaching the mayor and council. And you wanna find, you, you wanna, uh, you proclaim a, a formal, formal complaint that, why? It's the same reason, there is no, there's no drains?
No drain. And then, uh, the, the, the road, ha, uh, road, uh, height.
The pitch.
The pitch.
Okay, alright.
Is your driveway pitched in?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask, I'll get somebody over there. I'll ask the D P W and the new engineer, they will take a look. And I want you to, before you go, you don't wanna display your phone number to everybody else, but please, write a piece of paper, your phone number, and give it to Sofia Jenny. She's a clerk, so we have a formal contact. Alright, thank you.
And additionally, there, therefore, we did a speed bump, the, on the, the street. We did a speed bump.
On your street or?
Yeah, or our street, the, the section between the, uh, the, uh, Oak, Oak Dean, Oak Dean Avenue and the S R River, the Second Street.
Let me ask you, we're running out of time right now, but let me ask you, why do you think you need a speed bump?
Uh, the, that road is a, the two-way road. So, so every time the, the, the car passed the, uh, very best, so, uh, uh, we did a speed bump.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask the engineer, this all depends on the engineer's opinion, so I'm gonna put in.
Also, please, please consider the, the one way, only, uh, speed, please.
Why do you say one way?
Uh, because, uh, the, yeah, the, the other street, the, on the, uh, Second Street, uh, is on one way, but the, you, uh, especially out of the, uh, section is a two-way. So that, that's why the, the car is a, uh, so busy, fast.
Same issue.
I think, so are you asking a speed bump on a Second Street or Oak Dean or?
Yeah, yes, why?
You, you want the speed bump on a Oak Dean?
Oak Dean and the S R Bar Road and Second, Second Street, this way, this way.
He wants an, on the second.
Yeah.
On the second, right?
On the Second Street, yeah. And then, uh, please consider the one-way, yes.
Alright, thank you very much. Anybody else? Would you name an address?
Young Choi, one two nine Uzul Place.
Young Choi, one two nine Uzul Place. Go ahead, sir.
Um, I was just, I would just like to say that, um, I wholeheartedly approve of what Ms. Lee is trying to do with the model man, man and council. I think that would really help civic engagement in our school. Because I was a club leader of, uh, a couple of, one, one, um, civics club and by ourselves, we really couldn't get, like, it off the ground. And I think with the, the borough support, it would be able to definitely raise like awareness of small town politics and things like that. Um, also, I would also like to ask about the firemen background check requirement, because I don't, I don't think I've got a background check done by, um, Mr. Montevideo.
Are you the advocate, the junior?
Yes.
Good. Um, again, I think there's a law, if you're a minor, are you a minor?
Yes.
Are you seventeen, you're, so you're seventeen and sixteen?
I'm sixteen right now.
Okay, so what I've been told, but I'm gonna clarify, that's why I just wanna make sure. I believe that because you, you, your parents, your legal guardian, they have to represent you. So I think our part have to talk to your parents about it, so don't worry about it. I just need some proof from, for example, the police department saying that, hey, we did our job. We're okay. This, this, this gen- this student, this gentleman is okay. That's all I want.
Okay, that'll be okay.
Thank you.
And the decision will be made next week, Monday, with all this should, uh, necessary.
So if you wanna come next, if you wanna come next Monday, uh, it's six o'clock, you're getting more than likely will be. Thank you. Anybody else? Please come up. We have to get that translator. Council, councilman, are you supposed to get a translator for us? Wasn't there somebody who spoke Spanish, Korean, English fluently?
Yeah, but the, uh, the, 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 the status of, uh, the visa is.
I cannot, 한 말로는 못해요, 하지만 I'll, I'll speak slowly. I am sorry that we usually have a translator. 통용한 사람. But then, but then we're gonna get it soon. Come over here, name an address. 이름이랑 주소를 주세요.
저는 Second Street에 오백십오에 살고 있는 이 세서리입니다.
Second Street?
Yes, Second Street, five, five one five E, J E, J E, E.
E, J E, okay.
Same, uh, problem in the Second Street, a lot of tripping in the Oak Dean and the S R, the five, and others did the, start the five, all this way, too much tripping. So, and the, before in the Mai Kai and the bed and the, another car coming and the, other car in the parking, we can see in the, we car in the, with the crush in there, car, uh, crushing. Something that I, uh, I, I, please then, uh, make in the morning. I know you're making a hard job and, uh, please check in the, um, working way and the engineer. 그리고, uh, another, Second, um, same problem, a lot of Oak Dean and so, uh, Neonia is the 내려오는 물, 물가, 나루 and the Second Street 들어옵니다. Not in the, display in the fourth street and the third street, please then make in the aspect. You be in the, make in the, borrow in the engineer, check and divide all, all in the, uh, back and the Neonia in the park, water come down. Not a part of the, now in the building, nothing in the old aspect. 라루가 오르고 come in the fourth street, not and, 그러니까 토마치 물어요. 근데 그 물가 오르고 Second Street 들어내려온 건데.
Okay, try to speak English, because I have to translate.
아, 그래봐요. 미안해요. 내가 얘기 한국말 해야 정확하게.
No, no, we understand, just try to speak English.
아, 스페인어.
But what I understand was, it's the same problem, water problem, right? It's Second Street, you know, uh, same problem that.
Name.
Name, okay, name.
Okay, so do me a favor. I want you to write your phone number, contact phone number, give it to Sofia.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, we're gonna hire the engineer and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask him to go take a look and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Engineer know that, I wanna talk to him and I explain.
No, you don't talk to him. It's okay. When we, when he's there, we're gonna take a look. If you're there, we'll ask you to come out, I'll knock on the door and explain it. The engineer is more than, eh, more than, more than enough, uh, uh, ability to, to see what's wrong.
I live in the Second Year more than in the problem in the, the street and what's the problem and then. He, he knows the engineer something, of course. I know, I'm living there, what's the problem, water coming? Water in the way, which way to go there, which coming?
Sure.
I know more than in the engineer.
But engineers are gonna work with your schedule. What we're gonna do is, when we get an engineer, you give the phone number, I'll give you a call. And you know, you will call if it's not there. And so if you're not there, the engineer will still go there. If you're there, you can meet him.
Thank you.
But your, your participation doesn't require the engineer to do the job.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
And on top.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
And on top of that, uh, the traffic matter, right? It, this is what I wanna do. I wanna look into the last time the traffic survey we had, uh, the record.
Well, actually, the only survey that we had was recently been, uh, that been disclosed, which you saw by the county, which was dated two thousand twenty-three.
I know, but that's the, uh, uh, that was only for the, the, the bigger street that we don't own. I think that was recommended by the county.
Well, Route forty-six, when you come down, take away the speed bump and all that stuff.
So I'm talking about each, you know, local resident's street, I'm talking about.
Right, but it's gonna cost a lot of money. This is work with the, this, this is work with the ones that come to us. And then that's why we do this monthly meeting. We'll ask the new engineer to go to Fourth Street and Second Street. Because every, if you do every single survey, it costs a lot of money.
No, I know, I know, I just wanna know, when was the last, for example, right, specifically Second Street, right? I just wanna know, when was the last time, uh, traffic got surveyed? And based on that, right, based on that, you know, report, uh.
So the traffic is, I should know it's, uh, Sal Sima. He is our designated traffic engineer. Uh, I will give you his contact number. If you could give him a call and say, hey, this street, what, do you have any records of? Then you could see how long, how long this, right, the point. Thank you. You're out of time right now. You're out of time. This is way too long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please come up, sir, name and address.
Er, spearling three twenty-nine East Columbia. Um, I, it's not part of this meeting tonight, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, I enjoyed Saturday. You people, I'm, I'm sorry to say.
I'm sorry. No, not a party.
Wait, let me, hold on. I saved a lot of money. I got to enjoy Korean entertainment music.
Thank you.
It was beautiful. I sat there in front and, and I also enjoyed all your comments pertaining to the whole thing.
Thank you.
Another thing, which is not part of this meeting today, I did enjoy the benches, one bench, in particular, on the avenue, because I had my sandwich and banana for lunch. I didn't have Korean food, I'm sorry. Anyway, but me being a, a fussy po- person, I noticed that the bench only had two screws on it.
Yes, there's a reason for that. Let me tell you. D P W, uh, talked with the government, with me and Rayher. The reason why we're putting two screws right now, even though it is because exactly to be in the permanent spot. We're right now trying to see how many people sit down on certain benches and not. That's why the D P W said, hey, let me put two screws first now, because I'm lazy, just in case you change your mind. If you have to move into another location, from an unpopular to popular location.
Okay.
But who being designated?
Alright, because my concern is the safety of the people, plus, people are, uh, some people are not good and they, they, all they need you to do is bend and bench back and it's broken.
Try that and let me know, because, because what I've been told, the, the, the anchor is about this long.
But it's only a three and quarter inch.
It's got two. It's got two. So if you think that someone's gonna steal it, you gotta let me know. But I don't think someone's gonna fall off of it, but just wait until we're designated.
Okay, makes sense, makes sense. But I'm just trying to protect the bench too, you know? Alright, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anybody else? They have a motion to close public session and come back to our work session. They have a motion. Thank you, five seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
They have, they have a motion to adjourn the work session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your participation. Guys, have a good night. I'll see you guys next week.